The meeting of the Marquette City Commission is called to order on Monday, October 28, 2024 at 6:00 PM. It's a very jovial crowd tonight. Thank you for being quiet. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have roll call?
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Ottehway.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanley.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. I'm looking for a motion for approval. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Commissioner Schlegel?
I second the motion.
Any comments? Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. I have one announcement tonight, and that is just to remind people that early voting is taking place for the city of Marquette. It's at the Peter White Public Library, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM every day through Sunday. After Sunday at 4:00 PM, we will close the early voting. If you are still in need of voting on Monday, you can get to the city clerk's office and ask for an absentee ballot. And otherwise, Tuesday is our big day. Let's move on to boards and committees, and we have one appointment. Commissioner Ottehway.
I move to appoint Chris Sterling to the Downtown Development Authority for an unexpired term ending 1/1/26.
And Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
And comments?
I will say, I, it's funny for me, I told the group this before, actually coached Chris when he was in seventh grade basketball. I'm getting that old, it's awesome, but it's awesome to see how much he's stepped up in his community and is continuing to do so. So, very proud that he's stepping into the DDA.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We will move on to public comments. If you wish to make a comment, please step up to the podium. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone for public comment?
You go ahead.
If you are here to speak on the other, the item for the housing that, for our public hearing, that will be something later. So, just wanted to remind you of that.
My name is Corey Nordike. I can't remember if there's anything else I needed to tell you.
Your address.
Oh, 109 Zorza Drive, Ishbaming, 49849. I feel like I'm breaking the news here because I'm here in support of my good friend Jenna. And so I have a little speech that I wrote on her behalf. I've never had the chance to be a maid of honor, and so now I'm taking the opportunity to take the mic and root for one of my very best friends. I've known Jenna since way back in kindergarten, and she is just as ambitious today as she was back then. I'll admit, before Jenna decided to throw her hat in the ring for City Commission, local politics were a little bit of a mystery to me. I remember the day in early November when she showed up to a meeting of local women with some fire in her soul and motivation to get involved, and she did just that. Jenna has shown me that these roles aren't just about meetings and agendas, although very important parts of what you do, but that roles in our local commission are part of the heartbeat of our community. Leave it to Jenna to turn non-partisan politics into something exciting. A few years ago, I read Ruth Bader Ginsburg's memoir, and one of the terms in that book that stood out to me is the term congeniality. Collegiality, but maybe that was a good Freudian slip. Collegiality means companionship and cooperation between colleagues who share responsibility. Above all else, I have seen Jenna operate with collegiality in her work for the community. Whether she's advocating on the commission, operating as mayor, being an amazing mom, wife, sister, daughter, she leads with unwavering integrity and fierce resilience. She shows up not only for herself, but for all of us, day in and day out. Jenna, you are a treasure to our community and to all of us that are lucky enough to know you. Thank you for being the extraordinary person you are, and thank you for the work that you have put in to the Marquette City Commission.
Anyone else for public comment? Please state your name and address.
Jen Hill, 503 Craig Street, Marquette. And I'm speaking today about Jenna Smith and her appreciation of her service. We both joined the commission, of course, in 2018 and had a ride that neither of us expected with COVID and all that that entailed of an incredible collegiality is an understatement for the work that had to happen with staff and with our entire community, and your leadership was outstanding. And the videos that you did to help us understand what was going on in our community in that, in that very scary time, the strength that you showed, I'm so grateful that I was able to serve as your pro tem and work with you so closely during that very, very hard time. And I want to say, your level of preparation was, was amazing. And so that when I had to run a meeting, it was, it was this, if you were there, I mean, you know, you had your, your scripts, you were all ready to go. It was really, you made it so easy for us. But I think, as was said, that shows your, your level of dedication and thoughtfulness and empathy for the community was really, it helps me aspire to higher things. And I am so grateful I had the chance to work with you, especially, I just want to again, thank you for your service at that very, very hard time, and thanks for all you've done. And also thank you, Mayor Davis, to women who stepped up as mayors here in the last few years, breaking precedent. It had been a very long time since we'd had women here as mayors in Marquette, and I want to thank you both for your service and your leadership. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Barb Outtie, 1324 North Front. You want the whole address, right?
That's good. We know where you are.
Hopefully, I'm speaking on behalf of the people that attended the Citizens Academy, and if I'm not speaking on behalf of all of them, you can feel free to step up here and speak for yourself. We really appreciate you guys putting this together, and you did a great job. The city really went all out to educate just us regular residents about the way the city works. The sessions were incredible. They had some, I'm sorry I missed yours. That was, I think I was listening to Sally that night somewhere else, but really, you know, they did a really thorough job, took us on some amazing tours, answered questions almost at nauseam. But thank you for doing that. I would highly recommend it to anybody that's interested, and very worthwhile. And yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I'm Jay Gage. I'm from 927 East Bruce in Sault Ste. Marie, which is interesting because that's not Marquette. But as a former constituent of Jenna Smith's, it's a pleasure and honor to be here with you today on behalf of my boss, US Senator Debbie Stabenow, to congratulate and thank Jenna for her long service to this community. Not only are you a friend, not only are you a leader, but you're somebody that I've looked up to and had a great friendship with throughout your time on the commission and even outside, you know, certainly when I lived here, working on behalf of the senator, where you were always a good friend to help me know about events that were going on, keep me on the straight and narrow, maybe keep me away from breakers more than I should have been there, you know. But I've always enjoyed your friendship, and it's, well, it's sad to see you go. I know that this is the start of wonderful things for your future, and so I know that the citizens of Marquette and the Upper Peninsula aren't going to be without your service for too long. So hopefully, we continue to have you in some form of leadership. I also brought with me a certificate of congressional recognition from the senator, because much like me, Debbie Stabenow is a big fan of Jenna Smith. So, thanks for everything that you've done, and I look forward to being your friend for years to come. Thanks.
You need to give that to the city clerk, please. Know those rules.
Do better, Jay.
Hello, I'm Aubrey Moore, and my address is 1993 Center Street in Marquette. One up to you a little bit. I am also here on behalf of my boss, US Senator Gary Peters, and I have a letter from Senator Peters that I'm going to read for Jenna Smith to thank you for your service on the commission. Dear Ms. Smith, it is my pleasure to join your family, colleagues, and the citizens of Marquette as they celebrate your service to the community and observe the tremendous impact you have made during your time on the Marquette City Commission. For the past seven years, including three as the mayor, you have worked hard to serve the people of Marquette. As the city's first woman to serve as mayor since 1980, you handled the COVID-19 pandemic honorably and worked to increase access to affordable childcare and housing. You also played an essential part in the redevelopment plans for the former Marquette General Hospital site, a project that will transform the entire community. Your positive impacts on the city of Marquette will continue to be felt for years to come. Again, it is my great pleasure to congratulate and thank you for your dedication to serving the city of Marquette over the last seven years. I wish you well as you embark on the next chapter of your life. Sincerely, Gary C. Peters.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Public comment is now closed. And we will move on to our presentations. Our first presentation this evening is the Marquette Housing Commission by our, by our chair, Jackie Stark. So Jackie, there she is.
Hello. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jackie Stark. I'm on the Marquette Housing Commission, and here's our annual report. So I'm going to do that thing where I read slides, just briefly. But, so our mission statement on the Housing Commission is to provide safe, sanitary, affordable housing to low and moderate income individuals and families, promote personal responsibility and self-sufficiency to residents while maintaining fiscal integrity, also to provide adequate and affordable housing economic opportunity in a suitable living environment free from discrimination. We have a five-member board of commissioners. As you can see, we currently have two open seats. I know that Commissioner Smith used to be on the Housing Commission. I know you probably earned some downtime, but if you're interested in coming back, we've got a spot.
No, thank you.
And we also have, one of the other seats available is to somebody that currently is a resident living in one of our buildings or using a voucher. So we're trying to fill those two seats as much as we can. But we still, we do have at least three people, so we can meet. The fourth Tuesday of every month is our meetings. We hold them at 4:30 PM at Pine Ridge in the boardroom. This is a list of all the staff. I don't know if I need to read all the names, but this is the staff of the Housing Commission. So there's a couple of different ways that we administer housing. One is through the housing voucher program. It's funded by HUD. There's a couple of different options. There's tenant-based and project-based. The majority of our vouchers are tenant-based, which means essentially they're following the people. They're not tied to a specific residence. The wait currently is about three months. I think you're going to see kind of consistently that we have pretty good wait lists on everything that we're offering. But we, we have the ability to provide, I believe, 50 vouchers, but the funding for 37. So as rents increase, you know, there's a fun little algorithm that they use to provide the amount of money that we need to be able to support the voucher program. And so we do get a little bit more funding generally, but it's not enough to actually fulfill the 50 vouchers. But I will say that we have 37 families currently in 2024, and last year we only had 34. So it is trending upward, which is good. The new thing that we're adding since last year are project-based vouchers. So I'm not sure about the entire history of the Housing Commission, but for the last several years, we have not done any project-based vouchers, but we are working with Black Rock Crossing, which is the development behind Shopko, to provide six project-based vouchers in that building. And so those will be tied to the actual apartments. Whoops. So for the tenant-based, I kind of went over this already, but the tenant receives the voucher, they're responsible for finding an apartment or home. One of the issues with this is finding landlords that accept vouchers. So any landlords that are out there, call the Housing Commission. We'd love to talk you through the program. The family pays approximately 30% of their adjusted gross monthly income, and then the rest of the rent is paid via the voucher, and it goes straight to the landlord. So it does have the ability to follow the family, which is nice, which makes them portable. So if they're moving anywhere in Marquette County, they can use a voucher from our commission. It also allows them to move to other states, and then the voucher would change hands at some point. I'm not 100% sure, but we do fulfill our obligation as long as required. One of the nice things that happened this year, we've had some really great programming down at Lake Superior Village in the Youth and Family Center program. I think the staff there is fantastic, and they, they received a pretty sizable grant that has allowed us to hire some more people and them to provide more services. So they're offering, after school programming, they're offering meals to kids, lots of great stuff going on down there, and I'm sure they'd love to tell you guys about it if you ever have an opportunity to go visit. Same slide. So, oh yeah, and they also are doing field trips. Forgot about that. So we have taken the kids to a few different places. I think one of the favorites was Fit Body Boot Camp. The kids really liked that one. So currently, we administer housing at Pine Ridge. There's 140 units there, mostly one and two bedrooms. Lake Superior Village is 117 units that are split between two, three, and four-bedroom townhouses. And we're actually, I wrote this down, there's 148 people that are served at Pine Ridge and 329 people at Lake Superior Village, which I think is important to point out because the units I don't think really accurately represents the impact. And then one of our goals, we went through strategic planning in the last couple of years at the Housing Commission, and one of our goals was to find ways to increase our housing stock, because we've always historically only had Pine Ridge and Lake Superior Village. And after we went through the RAD conversion, we were able to have a sum of money that we were able to use to hopefully work on some long-term solutions. So we started looking for some houses that we could purchase and can add to our stock. So we did that this year. We bought a home on Mather Street that is two units. There's a one-bedroom unit and also an efficiency. And then we also bought a property on Fisher Street that actually has two separate one-bedroom homes on the lot. And so we're excited about that because we have the ability to keep the rent at whatever rate we want, so we won't have to increase it at the rate that the rest of the city is, is doing. And we'll be able to recoup the cost of those houses, you know, over the coming years, and hopefully just kind of keep slowly doing this. It's also our first full year of separation from the city. That took a lot of work on the part of our executive director, so thank her. Sharon's here, too. She did a great job getting everybody's benefits moved over, health insurance, all that good stuff. We're also currently applying for grants to update some of the items inside of the Mather Street and Fisher Street homes, some infrastructure things, water heaters, furnaces, stuff like that. And then this new development with Black Rock Crossing is pretty new for the Housing Commission. And we are currently working with another developer in Ishbaming to hopefully be able to provide vouchers there as well. So our goals to moving forward are always going to be hoping, hoping we can increase our impact through offering more units and becoming more of a property management organization for low income, so that we can also be working with other organizations outside of the Housing Commission, but still administering low-income housing. That's kind of our area of expertise. So, working with tax credits, that kind of thing, that's a way for us, we feel like we can increase our revenue and also increase the housing stock that we're in charge of. And maintaining a full board would be great. I think we've had a full board for like three weeks in all the years I've been on. So if anybody, anybody wants to join the Housing Commission, we sure would love to have you. So our steps to moving forward are pretty much the same, just finding and securing affordable housing. I think we all know kind of what the challenges are there. But one of our big goals is definitely making developers aware that we are able to manage properties. And we have a whole staff that does it every day, and they're pretty good at it. And filling gaps in other agencies, anywhere that we can kind of work with other folks. It's not just a city of Marquette problem. I think we all know that it's a countywide, UP-wide, statewide problem. So as much as we can work with other organizations, we'd like to do that. And then our challenges to moving forward are also pretty, pretty apparent. It's expensive to build new, it's expensive to fix, and it's, it's difficult to find landlords to accept vouchers. But those are going to be kind of perpetual issues, and we just do our best to work around them. And I think that's it. I don't know if I did it in 10 minutes, but I tried.
That was good, Jackie. I think you were under 10.
All right. Does anybody have questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Pro Tem Hanley?
I have a question about the properties in Ishbaming and, I believe, Nagani. I'm just confused as to how the Marquette City Housing Commission is overseeing things that are not in the city.
So the City Commission, as far as the Nagani properties go, we provided a loan to that nonprofit organization to purchase those properties, and they're paying us back the loan. That was part of us hoping to increase the housing stock. And then I believe because the vouchers, our vouchers are accepted anywhere in the county, that we can work countywide.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Sharon.
I didn't.
All right.
Other commissioners? Okay. I'm curious, since no one else is, I'm curious, you mentioned that you can take the, the people can take the vouchers out of state. Do you have a feel for how many of the vouchers from your organization are out of state right now?
That is a good question that I don't know the answer to. I don't know if Sharon knows off the top of her head.
Currently, none.
Currently, none.
Currently, none. That's a nice answer.
It doesn't happen often. It is, it is an option, though.
Thank you, Sharon, for coming up.
I was hoping to not have to. I'm Sharon Mackey. I'm the executive director. What happens is when somebody has a voucher, they are allowed to port it, which means they can take it to another community. That community has the opportunity to either absorb them or bill us. So if you have a voucher and you go to a city like Los Angeles, Los Angeles is strapped, and they have no additional money for additional vouchers. So we continue to pay for that voucher. If it's to a smaller city, hopefully that city is able to absorb that, which means they start paying for the vouchers themselves. So the, technically, we don't lose the voucher, but the voucher does go to someone else. Right now, we don't have any vouchers that are being ported out that we are paying for. Over the course of the years, there's been many.
So out of state, what about out of the county?
None.
Okay, that's good news. Okay. Well, so thank you very much. You know, when I attended your meeting, I was struck by how passionate the board was about being able to provide affordable housing for the citizens in Marquette. And so I'm, I'm grateful for you, and thank you for the work that you do. I think this is a big part of the affordable housing or the attainable housing that we can have here in Marquette County. Thank you.
I did also want to add, I forgot, to invite anyone if they'd like to take a tour of either of our larger, of Pine Ridge or Lake Superior Village, that we're always open to doing that, and you can contact Sharon.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And I would be remiss if I didn't also say, congratulations, Jenna. And of course, you are more than welcome to come back to the Housing Commission. We have that seat, I think it's still the same seat you used to, you used to sit in that's still empty.
It's been open ever since.
No, they had a full board. Okay. So let's move on to our next presentation, and Sean Hovins is going to come up to the podium. And we have our Rural Leadership Fellow recognition with Annie. Are you going to go up there with him, Annie?
Anne, I'd like to ask you to join me as well. Thank you.
So thank you. I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to recognize Anne for her work as the Rural Leadership Fellow for the city of Marquette over the past year. The Northern Michigan University Rural Leadership Fellowship is a competitive, paid, and scholarship-supported applied learning experience for students interested in rural economic development and, more importantly to me, public sector careers. This program is competitive on both the student fellow and the host organization side, and we both had to participate in an application and committee review process to be selected for this opportunity. So there were about a half a dozen communities and students that applied for the inaugural year of this fellowship, and both the city of Marquette and Anne were both selected from that competitive pool. I first met Anne as her professor in PS 309 State and Local Government in fall 2023, where she stood out for her passionate interest in local elections. I took the opportunity, along with city clerk Kyle Whitney, to recruit her to be an elections aide in the city clerk office, a role she has also carried with exemplary performance. When the Rural Leadership Fellow opportunity was announced, I encouraged her to apply, and to our luck, we were both successful in our applications. During the course of her fellowship, Anne has been of great assistance with her primary project, which was the public, public outreach for the master planning process. She helped us extend outreach throughout the community and engage with the community, both in person at our various sessions and through social media. Public involvement is an incredibly important element of city processes, especially master planning, and we're really grateful for Anne's involvement here. Anne's other project during this fellowship was the development of the city of Marquette. was the development of the City of Marquette's first Citizens Academy. At least first, that wasn't entirely based on police. I'll give you your shout-out, Ryan, if you'd like to sign up for that Citizens Academy. I've heard it's really great. But this was our first general Citizens Academy. Anne researched best practices, developed a curriculum, recruited eager participants, and organized an eight-week program to educate citizens on the function and scope of local government. I would direct everyone's attention to the next item on the agenda, the Citizens Academy graduation, to witness the culmination of Anne's efforts in this regard. As I'm sure those graduating members in the audience can attest, and as Barb already did, this was a greatly successful endeavor. So Anne, in closing, I wanted to present you with a certificate regarding your successful completion of the fellowship, and thank you for your time with the City of Marquette as our Rural Leadership Fellow. Thank you very much. And if you'd like to say a word or two, the mic is yours.
I would just like to thank you for being a professor and mentor and boss and, like, everything to me. I didn't think that coming up to Northern would provide me with as much experience and joy as it has, and the City of Marquette is the reason for that, and specifically, Sean is the reason for that. I'd just like to thank you, Karen, Kyle, everyone, for welcoming me and letting me do all of the work that I want to do, because I love it. And I'd also like to thank all of the Citizens Academy participants. We came a long way together, and I, I just, it became everything that I wanted it to be and more, and that was, I think, through a joint progress through the both of us. And so, thank you to everyone.
As they pause for a picture, I'm just going to note that our next presentation is a Citizens Academy graduation. So I'm going to go up to the podium now. Chief Griv, this is not to outdo your Police Academy, which has been very well-attended and I've had great comments on. It is, I am really pleased to present the certificates to the graduates of the first Marquette City Citizens Academy. But first, I really want to thank Karen Kovacs for tolerating my continual request to have, to host this academy. She was very supportive, but like, you know, like, this is a city that's very busy, and she has a lot on her plate. So it was really thanks to Sean and Annie that we were able to pull this first Citizens Academy together, and I am very grateful to the two of them because it was really a good program. I was only able to attend a couple sessions, but I've heard from a lot of you in addition to that. So, for those of you who don't know, our Citizens Academy is an eight-week course designed to inform residents about our local government and to encourage them to engage. Hopefully, they will be part of our, our different citizen advisory committees. You've heard that, there's room on the Housing Commission right now. And, you know, just, just so that you have more in-depth information about the city and dispel any myths that you might be hearing in the, in the community. So, just to give you a little rundown, our, the group heard from our city manager, myself, and our city attorney about our roles. They toured the police and fire departments, the wastewater treatment plant, and the service center that houses our fleet of vehicles, including our plows and electric vehicles that are being piloted. Community services spoke about our extensive services available to the community. The group learned about the election and the complexity of the clerk's office. Planning and community development was a topic that I heard could have gone on for several more hours. There were a lot of questions. And they discovered that financing and assessing is very interesting, as well as intense. So I'm really pleased to be presenting these certificates to each one of you. And as I bring your, I'll call your name if you would come up, accept the certificate, and then just kind of stand there, and the kind of first one goes down there, and you just kind of keep coming up. And Annie, were you going to be taking some pictures? Okay. So first, we have Darlene Allen. Congratulations, Darlene.
Thank you.
Don't you have to turn to Annie?
Thank you.
Then we have Jane Wittkin. Hey, Anne. A picture with Annie? There you go.
Thanks.
Joe Fordley.
Joe, thank you.
Okay. Susan Holiday.
Thank you.
Whoops. Let's get that straight.
That's right.
Ryan Hall. Okay. Barb Olson. Mary Rule.
Linda St. Arnold.
Linda Theory.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Linda. And there are some that we're not able to make it this evening. Alex Wilkinson, Katie Mo, Geraldine Nalt, Lance Peterson, and Heidi Peterson. So thank you very much for graduating and spending all of those hours with us to learn about the city. Don't sit down quite yet. I think, I think what we want to do is bring you out into the hall, get another picture, and Annie has another present for you. But wait, those of you who are missed sessions, if you want to make them up, we will be having another Citizen Academy after the first of the year, and I can attend those, because we, we don't want you to miss any one of them. Thank you very much. I'm just giving them a moment to leave the room. Well, we'll get it to her something. We can figure that out. Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearing, the CHIP Workforce Housing Brownfield Plan. And we will start with the background. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. A brownfield plan is being proposed for the redevelopment of 710 Chippewa Square from commercial to residential use for workforce housing, called the CHIP, developed by SLA Property LLC of Marquette. A public hearing must be held by the City Commission prior to approval of the brownfield plan. Approval of the brownfield plan will provide for the reimbursement of brownfield, environmental, and housing development-eligible activity costs, including environmental due diligence, and the gap between development and rent revenues for units for qualified households with income of 120% of the area median income or less. The brownfield plan was presented to and approved by the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority at their September 25, 2024 meeting. The local development finance authority approved an intergovernmental agreement for this plan at its October 21, 2024 meeting. The City Commission scheduled this public hearing at its October 15, 2024 regular meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation: Approve the resolution authorizing the brownfield plan for the CHIP housing development and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak on the public hearing, please step forward, say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Nancy O'Hearzika, and I am the co-owner of 706 Chippewa Square. And I'm here tonight to represent the other four of the five owners of the buildings located within Chippewa Square. I'm here to share our concerns about the housing unit being located within our business association. We're very concerned about the reality of having children playing in this area, an incredibly busy parking lot, and we feel that this is a potential to become a huge safety risk. The other concern we have as businesses that live in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, we use overnight hours to clear snow from our business parking lot, which is a shared lot within the association. So our businesses can all open on time in the morning five months of the year. With this now becoming housing and people and cars being there 24/7, we are concerned about the ability for that lot to actually get cleared and stay cleared over the, during the overnight hours. This is a shared lot, and the, and the surrounding areas are also shared, and we're just really concerned about the logistical nightmare that could take place when you move housing into a business setting. The next thing I would like to address is the association's desire to set the record straight regarding some remarks that were made here to you all at the commission meeting on July 29 by Mr. Stein, Mr. Lempen, when they did their initial presentation. For those there at that meeting, their statements would lead you all to believe that we, as the other owners, we are, we're fully aware of this project, and in fact, we're in favor of this project, and this is untrue. None of us knew anything about this plan. No one was notified about this plan or project, and it was only because Elizabeth, one of the business owners, happened to be in attendance that night for another reason that any of us ever became privy to this information. We understand that there is a dire need for housing in the City of Marquette. We do not deny that, and we are empathetic to that. But we are concerned, the majority of us as Chippewa Square Association owners, we have concerns regarding this location of the project, and we want to be sure that you, as the commissioners, are aware of our concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Anyone? Anyone else wants to speak?
I guess I can get up and speak.
You can, you can get up and speak at this point, yes.
So unnatural of me to do this, but. I'm Cheryl Feldman, 1630 Center Street in Marquette. I have been hearing rumors that they want, these builders who want to convert this, and I agree with everything this woman said, want a 20-year tax abatement. I don't know if that's true. I don't know if that's a rumor. But if it is true, I have to speak out against this. That's too long, the period. Much too long. I don't get a tax abatement at all, and neither do any of you. This cannot be allowed to go through with that 20-year tax abatement. You want to give a year, maybe two, that's fine, to get their feet up and going. But 20 years is too long. And she has a valid point, I don't mean she, but you had a valid point in terms of safety, kids. That is a big, busy parking lot. I go there for my dentist, and it's every woman or man for themselves in that parking lot. And I, I would not like to see kids playing in there. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing? Anyone else? Public hearing is now closed. I'm first going to turn to Commissioner Schlegel, as he has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Due to my past professional working relationship with at least one of the developers, and the current position that I hold with Northern Energy Solutions for the last 12 years, I need to abstain from this vote because of a reasonable expectation of personal financial benefit if this project would be approved, doing that to be completely transparent and to make sure that there's no conflict of interest. Thank you.
So Commissioner Schlegel will not participate in the discussion nor the vote. So, at this point, then, commissioners, I'm looking for a motion. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the brownfield plan for the CHIP housing development and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
And the second? Pro Tim Hanley?
I second.
Any comments, Commissioner Smith?
Sure. I guess what I would say about this is we've been working on housing for a long time. Finding solutions in 2024 to the housing crisis that we have is going to require 2024 solutions, not 1980 solutions, not 1990 solutions, not 2000 solutions. We've got to look to the present and do something new to make sure that we've got housing affordability for a variety of incomes into the future. I am hopeful that some solutions can happen with that shared parking lot with the existing business partners in that area. That typically is not something that the city would get directly involved in, and that would be expected that the businesses would work that out on their own. But certainly, I'm hopeful that that can come to terms. I'm looking forward to seeing how this all moves forward and seeing other similar projects in the future. Thanks.
Pro Tim Hanley?
I have a question for city staff, if that's okay. So I was wondering, with this, we have obvious taxes coming in right now. What level will the taxes be collected at and stay being collected at through the entirety of this plan that will come to the city? Do we know that answer?
I'm going to just say this, and I'm going to kick it over to Deputy City Manager Sean Havens. But the base value, from my understanding, and what was listed in the plan, is $350,000. The local taxes that are being levied at that point are around $11,000, and for the city, that would be about a portion of that, close to that $6,000 mark. Going forward in the future, then, that, that is where they will be capturing that, that tax revenue and would be reimbursed. And that's where I'm going to kick it off to Deputy City Manager, if you don't mind.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. That was well-stated. Just as a note, brownfield plans operate off of tax increment financing, not tax abatements. But basically, it's a freeze at the beginning of the project on paper, so that the taxes that are currently being collected by the taxing entities continue to be collected by the taxing entities through the life of the project, and then we can use the increase in taxes based on the improvements made on the project as a result of the project to fund separate, you know, different aspects of that. So right now, you correctly stated, the local capture is about $11,340. The total, sorry, not capture, the total tax bill is about $20,000. After the improvements, we're estimating over the 20-year lifespan, the TIF capture to bring in about $37,000, increasing up to $57,000 at the end of the 20-year period, to help fund those eligible expenses, being the reduced rent on the project.
Perfect. And then I did see that there, there is money going back into the local brownfield revolving fund through this plan, correct?
Correct. There is a capture for the local, local brownfield revolving fund at the end of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I just wanted to add on this, you know, right now the local capture is about $6,000. At the end of that '21 period, when I was doing the math, it's over $24,000, so it's quadrupling the amount of local tax capture we would get at the end of it. But for members of the public that are curious, this is kind of a new mechanism as far as housing goes, and I'm kind of glad if we're going, if we're going to test it. We're going to do it with a smaller development and not a massive one, to see how this really pans out. But it's for 14 residential units. Seven of them would be at 100% of the area median income, or up to, I should say, and the other seven would be up to 120% of AMI. The way this new mechanism kind of works is, we are essentially using the TIF capture to subsidize, to create affordable housing. But because it is a brownfield fund, half of that capture is the state's tax dollars that we're essentially taking back to help subsidize that. So it's a very interesting mechanism that I, I'm sure our Deputy City Manager can talk at length about. But, you know, looking at it, the state capture that we'd be pulling back from that's, what, 60, 46 and 1/2%? The other half would be our local capture. But, yeah, just additional food for thought there, as people are trying to understand this as well.
Thank you. Other commissioners? No comment? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Otte.
So I've, I've kind of struggled with this one, when it comes to trying to determine if this is the right move for us when it comes to going down and utilizing this mechanism given, given to us by the state. And ultimately, I will kind of side with Commissioner Smith here. The issue that we're, we're tackling is a 2024 issue. It's not a 1987 issue. And this is a very creative way. And if anyone knows, I'm all about creativity when it comes to trying to find ways to, you know, come up with solutions to problems. The important piece of this that I think the, the public needs to understand, and why I'm for this as opposed to maybe other developments that we may see, this already has taxes that we are collecting on, large tax base. So, as, as Commissioner Mayor- So as Commissioner Mayor already pointed out, we're locally already getting quite a bit of money from this. It's not like we're starting out at $0 and giving them the opportunity to make a boatload of money off of it. We're already sitting at a baseline that is a pretty decent one. So really, it's an investment in our future. It's an investment in really getting more affordable housing in the area. And I think it's a, ultimately, it's something we're not going to know the answer to, but I think it's a great test to see if it's going to be something that works. And I'm looking forward to seeing how it progresses. But I'm confident that this is a solution to trying to find some more affordability in the housing market. Thank you.
No, your choice. Commissioner Larson.
Sure. I would just say that, you know, I've gone back and forth on the issue of how to move this forward. And I think ultimately, Commissioner Mayor has said, you know, that this moving forward maybe with a smaller project, you know, 14 units rather than, you know, a 30 or 40-unit facility, you know, may really make sense for the city of Marquette. And we're not the first, we're not the first community in Michigan to use this mechanism. So there's other communities that have used it before us. And I think, you know, this size is probably the right way that we can move forward with this and especially for those, you know, that housing at 100 or 120%. You know, some of those folks, you know, the working-class citizens here in Marquette, to have, you know, an affordable place to live, this offers that opportunity, at least in this little experimental box that we're in right now. So thank you.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Mayor.
Just one quick question for City Manager. When we discussed this last, I can't remember when our work session was, but the topic of qualifying income to make sure that's actually falling within these parameters, the way that this plan should work, is, can you elaborate a little bit just for the general public knowledge, how that works at all?
So I guess let me just ask for a clarifying question here. Are you looking for that initial application of who will qualify? Or are you talking about continuously thereafter for the duration of the TIF?
I could say both.
I, you know, actually, Sean, are you able to answer that one since you're?
Yeah, I think it's going to be, I don't have an exact answer here right now. I think it's going to be a bit of a process we're going to have to figure out together. But the Brownfield Authority is going to have to take a role in verifying that initial income upon application. MISTDA, the state agency approving these Act 381 plans, has been very specific that they are not going to require continuous re-verification of income. It's only the initial verification of income. I think with their assumption being that, you know, people move out of rentals or move on from rentals after a certain amount of time and they aren't looking at kicking middle-income residents out of housing units that were established for them. But there will be an application process that has income verification on the front end to make sure it meets those components of the plan.
And the equation for the income calculation is determined by MISTDA, right?
In so many words, yeah. It's complicated.
Okay, thank you.
And I will state that it will be a learning process on behalf of probably the developers and the Brownfield Authority and unfortunately, our city treasurer. My apologies.
I'm good, Your Honor.
Any additional comments?
Okay, for those of you that spoke this evening, I just want to know that we are not deciding whether or not this project gets built or developed, but only voting on the Brownfield itself. You know, and there's no question that Marquette has a shortage of housing and expensive to live here and that we need the sustainable housing. It's a good project for all the reasons that have already been mentioned. You know, it's, I like that the developers are asking for 20 years or we at least negotiated 20 years instead of 25, but they could have asked for 30 years. And I like that it'll be able to provide 14 apartments for families or individuals. I also like that it is a redevelopment and not a brand-new development. You know, and based on the comments from the other Commissioners, I suspect that this will get approved. But I want, I've had some phone calls on this and I want to just express consideration for the other side of the positives. And I'm going to have to read some of this so I don't forget some of it. So please excuse that. Just as a caution to the commission, to the city administration, to future developers regarding the heavy lifting that's placed on some of our traditional property owners and renters when we approve a project like this. And I assume that there's going to be more coming down the road. You know, I wish we didn't have the budget problems that we've experienced over the past several years. I wish we could fix our streets and fund other needed capital projects. But the fact is that the heavy lifting of providing our services, our base services, rests on the shoulders of a small portion of our city. So let me just describe this for people. Marquette is an area of 19.45 square miles. So let's say it's that, of which more than, a little more than 11 square miles is land. So let's take away the water. So now we have this much, 11 square miles. 50% of our land is untaxable. It's green space, it's the university, it's the prison, it's the nonprofits and the government agencies. So now we're down to that particular part. Of this small portion of our city land, we have some beautiful new buildings, big buildings that are within the Brownfield projects. We have nine of them right now. So let's carve out a whole bunch of those because we do not get the increase in taxes for those projects for another at least 10 years. So now let's consider the DDA. Then our DDA is pretty large. And in 1996, we have a baseline of the DDA and the DDA gets the TIF, the increase of the taxes since 1996. So let's carve out another portion. And let's also take a look at our payment in lieu of taxes because those pilts do not pay full taxes. And in there are a lot of our affordable housing. And I hope I get them all, you know, the Pine Ridge, the villages, Oriana Ridge, the orphanage, part of West Stone and Snowberry Heights. So the combined pilt of these properties, what they provide to the city is only around $40,000. So now we're carving out another part. So we've got this small portion of the city that is doing the heavy lifting for providing the basic services. So that's what we have left. And that small percent of land is really what's keeping us alive right now and why we are having problems with our budget. I wish it were different. So who are those people? Some of them are businesses and a lot of them are residents who are on fixed incomes, who are already worried about affording their taxes, affording their water bills, affording, you know, what's happening with inflation. And some of them are renters that have to respond to the higher rents because their landlords are faced with the same thing. And this is why we have budget woes. And despite the talents and there's a lot of hard work that our city administration and our staff and our department heads have been putting into helping to fix our budget and we've come a long way and I think that our future is bright, we are still not in a position to fix local streets or to afford needed capital projects. So this has really been a difficult decision and I appreciate the few Commissioners who said that it's been a difficult decision for them also. I'm grateful that this project will provide relief for 14 families. If approved, the estimate is that we'll reduce taxes by 807,875 over the 20-year period. On average, that's a little more than $40,000 a year. And that includes not only the city taxes, but school taxes and other things. That doesn't sound like a lot of, when we look at our general budget of $22 million, it kind of sounds like budget dust. And it kind of feels like budget dust right now. But that $40,000 would be multiplied by, for a 100-unit apartment or when someone comes in and wants to develop 25 single homes. So we, as a commission, do not know where our tolerance level is. In 10 years, maybe five years, we will be able to embrace a lot of these Brownfield projects. I'm just not sure that we will be able to do it or we should be doing it in these next couple of years. And that's why this has been a difficult decision for me because I'm listening to those people who are doing the heavy lifting. And at this very moment, I remain really torn for the attainable housing that we need and the stresses that are placed on that small percentage of our landlords. And so my vote is, again, I really like this project, but my vote is going to go to represent that group of people in our community because as a commission, we are supposed to be representing all people, not just some of the people. So with that, I am going to have a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
No. Motion passes four to two. Too much of a speech. And with that, I will move on to the second public comments for the evening. Oh, pardon? We have a consent agenda, whoops. That was just like, those are usually later. Commissioners, I would like a motion on the consent agenda. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I second the motion.
Any comments? Comments, Mr. Schlegel?
None.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And now I will go on to public comments. If you wish to speak on public comment, please step up to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name and address hasn't changed. It's still Cheryl Feldman, 1630 Center Street. I'm a retired English teacher. This to me is MAP and it's a story problem. I could not do a story problem. So here is my question and it's really, excuse my ignorance, it's really for clarification. Are you seeking a 20-year tax abatement? Is that rumor true? You're shaking your heads, no, it is not true. Is that right?
We cannot respond to you.
Oh, I forgot.
But if you stick around for Commissioner comments, I bet you'll get that answered.
You are about, from what I understand, as happens every year, you are about to level an increase in taxes for city homeowners and I assume business owners, not necessarily this year, but next year. You know, our backs are to the wall. We cannot afford giveaways. We've heard that the city is bleeding money. We've heard that you've turned corners financially, but it's not enough. You can't keep coming after us. There just isn't the money there for it anymore. We are a very expensive city to live in and yet, you're right. We can't fix the roads. They're deplorable. I don't see a lot of improvement coming our way. I don't see things being offered to the homeowners that would make life easier. And yet, whereas we do need affordable housing, I support it. Nobody should be without housing. But I'm not sure we can do this deal. So that was my concern. So I thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Sean, are you publicly commenting?
You've heard me, Sean Havens, 920 Spring Street. You've heard me talk a lot tonight. I just wanted to take a second to say, Commissioner and former Mayor Smith, it has been an honor to work with you over these years. My nine years at the city, you've been on the commission for at least six of them, maybe a little bit longer, seven, that's right, seven. I'm in the mayor for three, including during times of, you know, intense turmoil at the city and your leadership through crisis. You know, I remember those days. I don't know if fondly is the right word because it was very difficult. But I remember, you know, as, you know, city leadership, yourself, Mike Angeli and me, you know, meeting in this room, meeting in that room, running meetings. And it was really just, your time in public office has been exemplary. Thank you.
I'm not so sure he's public, but we'll excuse that. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Public comment is now closed and we have, we'll move to comments from the commission. And Commissioner Schlegel, I'm going to begin with you.
You would tonight. Thank you, Mayor. We all know that trick-or-treating is coming up and so please be aware of all the kids that are going to be running around. Watch out for them and their costumes and their probably less vision than you'd ever think that they could, if you ever didn't think that they'd walk into a wall before, they're going to do it this time. So please watch out for the kids this holiday. I've got to obviously jump on the bandwagon and thank Jenna for her years of service. When I was appointed to fill Tom Balgini's seat after he passed, it was a great honor to be able to serve during that almost three-year period. Two of those years, well, one of those years was with Jenna as mayor and we went into COVID. Not only was she a great leader throughout that and would have given a roll of toilet paper to anybody if needed, I'm sure. If you, all you had to do was ask. But it was one of those times that, you know, you forget real quick right about now and you get past this far and you forget those mornings that we'd get up and get on the radio and speak with, you know, Sunny 102 and Walton and say, you know, what are we supposed to do? We're supposed to social distance, we're supposed to do this, we're supposed to do that. We have to figure out how we're going to run meetings and all of this stuff that happened. And the whole nation went through it. But we weren't getting a lot of leadership from areas that I personally thought we should have been at the time, but we did from this commission and from the city employees here. And Jenna was a huge part of that. And I was really proud to be a part of that time as well because it was, it was a time of uncertainty. We just didn't know, we've never seen anything like that. So thank you so much. And you've been always nice to give little tokens of appreciation over the years. And about 20 years ago, I was on the Press Kyle Advisory Committee. And then sitting mayor and future Representative John Kivla was nice enough to give me, at the time, believe it or not, the city gave away the key to the city. And this is what I got and a T-shirt for six years of service on the Press Kyle Advisory Committee. We did a lot of great things in that time and he said to me afterwards, he said, you know, what are you going to do next? And I said, well, I got a young kid and I'm going to spend some time, you know, getting this part of my life and sort it out and going from there. But I'll be back. And I did, I got into other areas and I love to serve. And to sit in front of you guys and be able to have this conversation, it really is an honor to be a part of this community and this commission. So as a gesture of absolute respect and admiration, I would like to pass my key to the city. Onto former mayor and retiring commissioner. And if I have to go through the clerk on this, I'm happy to do that. So here it is. It's literally, it's a pin, it's the key of the city. It doesn't open a damn door in the building. You got the keys for that.
Commissioner Smith, your comments for the evening?
Yeah, I do, I wrote some comments up. You know, usually I keep it pretty short, but I wrote some things for tonight because I figure it's my last chance. All right, thank you all, you are so kind. It's been an interesting seven years in the commission. I've learned a lot. I wrote up seven things that I've learned in my seven years, so hang on. Number one, fair meetings are far more important than any one person's opinion. And yes, that includes commissioner opinions. No. Authenticity matters, speak the truth. There are always ways to say it like it is and still be respectful. If you don't know the answer, say so and then work to find the answer on a reasonable timeline. Good communication requires empathy, confidence, and a plan. It doesn't have to be perfect, it just has to be true. Fifth, I'm a less, I'm getting to the end here, don't worry, I won't keep you all night. When in doubt, focus on the local. I know right now, we've got a lot going on with state and national politics. Big-ticket elections can pull focus, but I promise you, your local elections matter so much more than you think. Think about your own neighborhood, street, sidewalks, utilities, the streetlights, flow of traffic, plowing of snow, police and fire services, parks, beaches, the sale and development of city-owned properties, trails located on city-owned land, festivals and events, the downtown, farmer's market, arts and culture, our library, our senior center, zoning, signage, and the list goes on. And these are the things that happen in our consent agenda every meeting that you may, you know, you obviously can read about, the public, you may not know, but they're critically important to the feel and the look of our town. All right, two more. Ego versus heart. At the beginning of my time as a commissioner, a friend called me an accidental politician. She wasn't wrong. Several years later, I think maybe it's the best kind. Real people wanting to serve. I have a theory that there are only two types of politicians, people who are in it for their ego and people who want to give back. It's pretty easy to figure out who has heart and who wants to be on the front page of the Mining Journal. Support the ones with heart. And my last one here, in the words of Emily Dickinson, "Forever is composed of nous." This is the same quote that I used when I was a brand-new This is the same quote that I used when I was a brand-new city commissioner in December of 2017 at 29-years-old. I won't make you do the math, I'm 37. And it still rings true today. And I didn't know that my parents were going to be here, they're in the back row, but I put on here that as my Grandpa Glenn would say, which is my dad's dad, do something, even if it's wrong. Translation, don't sit around and wait for the perfect moment. Get up and get going, there's work to do. So thanks for bearing with me while I share a few important lessons I've learned. I'm so glad to be departing the commission at a time when we have highly capable leadership, an excellent strategic plan, a balanced budget, and a clear vision for the future. I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to be a part of it, and I look forward to cheering on the city of Marquette through all the inevitable challenges and opportunities ahead. It has been the honor of a lifetime to serve on the Market City Commission and in the city of Marquette. Thank you, Marquette.
Commissioner Larson, your comments, please.
That's, that's a lot. That's a lot. All right. This out of the way first, is I'd just like to commend the staff and volunteers at the Peter White Library for the smooth and efficient early voting process that happens. It's nice that it was so well-established and easy to move through. And then finally, you know, thank, it's been a privilege to serve alongside Jenna these last two years that I've been on the commission. It's certainly inspiring to see her commitment to the city of Marquette, and her leadership is certainly going to leave an impact here. And, you know, the first time I met her, when I was going for, looking for the appointment of the open seat, she said, I'm not going to appoint you unless you're committed to staying on the commission and to running once it's, once, once we're, once your term is up. And so, she's very committed to Marquette, very committed in the people that she works with, and, you know, I'm very grateful that, you know, we were able to serve together. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor.
Come on, this is hard. Before I forget, I will say one thing. Sean, I don't think I've ever seen a city staff member do that before. And I'm honestly, I love it. That was... Jenna, this is going to be really weird not having you in our meetings anymore. You know, when I first got elected to the commission, it was an interesting time, I think even for the commission, and it was very interesting dynamics up here. And you were always the diplomat that could keep the whole group together and on task. And I think all of us can look back on it, including previous commissioners, and all agree on that point. And, you know, it was an honor to serve as your pro tem, your last year that you were mayor, and learning a lot from you as a, what, 24-year-old at the time? It's okay, I'm laughing at me too. But I mean, it was, it was really incredible to learn from you and watch the way you handle things. And, you know, you can go throughout this community and you'll never hear a single person say something negative about Jenna Smith, because you just have a way of bringing people together, and it's something I've always admired from you. I will give you, I guess, one tidbit that I don't think I've ever told you before, and if former mayor Fred Stonehouse is watching, please don't hunt me down for mentioning it. But when I was first elected mayor, I asked Fred, who was Jenna's predecessor, for some advice, and I'd mentioned something about running the meetings. And he pretty much told me, if I could even attempt to run a meeting half as good as you could, I'd be okay. And he went further on to explain that he knew I would never be able to run a meeting as good as you, and he knew he could never run a meeting as good as you. And I know, you know, he was also someone that you admired, and even if he didn't agree all the time, you did also admire him. So I just wanted to share that with you. And again, Fred, please don't hunt me down. But truly, it's been an honor, and I really look forward to seeing what your next chapter is. So, thank you.
Commissioner Otte.
Before I cry about you, like everyone else, let me first say, it's not an abatement, not a 20-year tax abatement. So currently, the way, the way TIF works, we are collecting taxes already on that property. Ultimately, any of the growth that comes because of their development, that's what they will collect on that brown, brownfield as far as the tax incremental financing. So, once again, which is why I said it is an investment. Ultimately, we're getting taxes there whether they do it or not, we're still going to get the same taxes. So, yeah, you're welcome. Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. So before I get to you, I'll get to me first. Vote, vote, vote. Get out and do that. I will say, I early voted today. It was awesome. I love early voting. I think it's the greatest thing since sliced bread. I think it's awesome. Get to Peter White. The staff there is doing so awesome, and the stickers are amazing. I will say, my first time getting a cool sticker in the city of Marquette, so I was very proud about that and was showing everyone I could. Look at, there's some right there. Really cool. So yes, get out and early vote. Once again, before I get to Jenna, I have to say that there's a chance I might not be here after this meeting myself, and that's okay. I met so many great people over the last couple of years. You know, and really, I want to first off, say thank you to the commission. Not only the commission sitting here, but add Fred Stonehouse to that as well. You know, ultimately, a couple of years ago, you appointed me unanimously to my neighbor's seat over there, Representative Hill. So hopefully, I've done a good enough job that you guys aren't regretting that decision. So, I appreciate that. I also, with Commissioner Schlegel being here, I will say that it has been an honor to serve with each and every person that is on this commission. I feel like we have made some really difficult decisions together. I think we are willing and able to listen to each other fully. I think it's really, I mean, today, honestly, I was 70, 30, looking to vote a certain way, but our mayor convinced me that I wasn't 100% there. And I think that those conversations happen readily in a group of people that are ultimately looking for the best thing together, and that is to make our community continue to get better. And that's what every single person sitting in these seats is all about. We are very, very lucky to have the commission we have. I also want to thank Karen. Without Karen Kovacs, I certainly wouldn't have, you know, hoped to try to get nominated for, or, you know, appointed to this position, I should say. Karen and I met because of my service on the DDA, and she was also a member of the DDA when she was hired as city manager. And ultimately, the timing just was right for both of us, and I ended up here. So, if I'm still here at the next meeting, great. If not, let's get talking. Now, Jenna, this is a very full-circle moment for me, and you can probably understand why. So Jenna and I, when Jenna was appointed to Sarah Kambensey's seat, her and I were the two people that were up for the appointment. She actually beat me, I think, like four to two. I got a couple of votes, and I think one of them was your husband, but he was nice. He didn't like Jenna for whatever reason, but I'm not sure.
Okay, Jenna paid him bad.
Absolutely. But ultimately, I will say that at that time, when Jenna was, was appointed over me, it encouraged me to really start getting more and more heavily involved. So I have, first off, Jenna to thank for that, because if she didn't get that appointment over me, I don't know that I would have learned as much about the city as I currently do understand. And I can tell you, after, you know, seeing Jenna develop into this amazing human being and just fabulous leader, that so many people care about, I mean, think about the people that came here to say hello and thank you to you tonight. Each and every one of us can only hope to accomplish that and get those feelings of the people that we actually care about reciprocated. I think you're a special person. I think you are going to be somebody that we cannot replace on the commission. Jenna's best quality, I think, is that she is always willing to listen and tell you that you're stupid if she thinks that. And I think that that is extremely important when we're talking and bouncing things off of each other. She's an open book, and not only is she an open book with us, but she's very much an open book with people that are members of the community. If you go back and look at any YouTube meeting that we've had over the years, or any, you know, replay on YouTube, and you see somebody, a member of the community, talking, I can promise you that Jenna Smith is always completely focused on what they have to say and knows everything about it at the end, and is very respectful. And that is something that I think is extremely important and a quality that all leaders must have, and you have that to the highest T. Thank you so much for just doing everything you've done for my community while I've worked here. It's been an honor to get to know you, and I wish nothing but the best for you. Thank you.
Commissioner Otte, thank you for clarifying the tax abatement versus the TIF. And I just want to reassure you that they will be paying taxes not only on the current value, but on the increased value, so that that increase in taxes just goes into the brownfield.
I'm heartened and I appreciate it.
Okay. I am not one for long goodbyes. So I am, and I think everybody, oh, did I, oh. I kept thinking I started with...
It's okay. I legitimately don't know what to say after all of that. Like, I was hoping we just, would just, right by me. But no, I do want to say thank you to Commissioner Smith for all of your guidance since I've been on this commission. When I first came on, you gave me the best advice that I have ever gotten, which is, don't respond on Facebook. Call people, email them, but don't respond on Facebook. And I think a lot of other commissioners can learn that sometimes. But, no, but no, really, your guidance was very helpful in shaping me into the commissioner I've become, which I think is a decent enough one. I think you have been amazing for this commission, and through the multiple commissions that I have sat on at this point, I really do like the makeup that we had this year, and I'm going to be very sad to see it change just slightly, hopefully. So thank you so much for everything you've done for the city.
No, it's my turn. I'm really not one for long goodbyes, and I've already told Jenna my thoughts on her service and how I've appreciated her. The only other thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight is her extreme talent in running Zoom meetings and all of the technology that she had to maneuver during those meetings, so thank you for that extra talent. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to the city manager.
I do want to just add on to the tax abatement question, just because I think that there's a little bit of clarification or some points I think are really important. It is not a tax payment, so I think that was three times, so hopefully then maybe that is out there. It takes me more than three times to hear it, so. This is actually a program that is utilized for incentivizing development and redevelopment. And the, you know, real positive on this is what we are receiving in tax revenue right now remains and does get distributed to those taxing entities as if they're, you know, nothing has happened, and that will continue. And so, that incentive to continue to develop or redevelop a property, especially in previous uses of brownfield incentives for cleanup efforts, this is something that continues to increase that property tax value and then also increase that property tax revenue that will be eventually, as an investment is, back into the city for those agencies. So, I just wanted to clarify that, and I could not have said that any more, you know, any more eloquently, but I do know somebody who would, and eventually, with the new commission, we probably will do another work session or a presentation on brownfield funding, especially adding into the housing use as well. So, I do want to mention that. And also, with our housing efforts, we have, we have applied many different tools for housing developments within the city over even just the past, I would say, you know, few years, and Jenna and you are really someone to thank for that as well. But we do have, we utilize other tools like local development agreements. We have market value in supporting just private development. We do have those payment in lieu of taxes. We have LI-Tec, which is the low-income housing tax credit, which does come in the form of a Pilte, as were a pilot as well. We have supported the Build UP program, which provides some private funding to some projects that goes through a whole nother level of review and oversight. We have done 425 agreements, which is partnerships with another municipality such as the township in order to support housing, and we also have sold property at, at 80% of appraised value in order to promote affordable or more affordable or attainable housing as well. And those are just a few of those examples, and now there is this tool that the state has put out there that is really something to be, to be seen. So, there's many different ways to do this, there's many different arrangements, but there's quite a bit there. And that's not even talking about the zoning reform that we have, have been doing and some of those other utilities that we've been exploring as well. So, I just wanted to make that point as well, and we will have more conversations on this and with status updates as well. So, don't forget, also, this week does begin leaf collection, and the map is out there for those zones, so please pay attention. There are two weeks of leaf collection, so if your tree is not bare yet, just wait because I think the wind is blowing. So you do have one more chance for that. And then please pay attention to the drop-off locations for those hours as well, because those will be closing and they do get full towards the end. So, please just pay attention to those. You can look on the city Facebook for that. And I will mention a few comments here for Commissioner Smith, and it is one that is bittersweet, obviously, to say goodbye. I am actually looking forward to perhaps maybe having a friend here as well, because sometimes, you know, coming, coming into a new city, which by the way, we moved our entire family 500 miles because somebody had said, please take a chance with us, and I look forward to seeing you. And I, of course, was like, yes, of course. But it was, Jenna was a welcome face from the very beginning, actually on my trip here on the road, as I was just getting cell phone signal again. Jenna has, had called to make sure that I was taken care of for the evening, my first time here, my first day here, and, and then I do believe there were a few phone calls after that, making sure that I was not planning on leaving. Because I was struggling to find housing, and I think you offered up maybe perhaps a room as well somewhere. So, she was trying to make it as simple as possible to stay here and make it as successful so I can focus on getting, getting things going here. And then there were obviously a wild ride of adventures that first few months with our budget, and then with some other developments that were coming, and it was really, it was nerve-wracking to call you. However, you were the first, first person to call, not just because you were the mayor at the time, but the first person to call because you were that steady, that steady leader, and, and that has really kind of resonated with the form, the next mayors that we have and the rest of the commission as well. So I can definitely see your impact on, on that, and your leadership within this community is something to be admired, and it is, is very rare to have a leader and to have a commission that we have right now that is representing the community and also supporting staff and being able to challenge us so we continue to grow in the right ways. So, thank you. And I do look forward to some friendship and perhaps maybe a 5K or two with you as well. There are some Eminem photos out there of you, so that's all. Thank you. And, and also, I do want to say the past year, under the leadership of our current mayor right now, Mayor Davis, has been a wonderful time. It's been very challenging, and again, it's one of those moments where I did not expect to continue to grow. Not that I, I don't think that I can, but there are these challenges that we have overcome in the past year, and it's been really great to have that steady leadership as well. And I know that that's just because of the great commission we have, so thank you. That's all. Thanks.
You're done. Thank you, city manager, and that concludes our meeting at 7:24 PM.